Can we stand in? Do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any public audience? Great.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Is there any public audience?
What do you mean by that?
Would you like to speak?
You'd like to say anything?
No, I'm good.
We're glad you're here. You're welcome.
I'd like. No, I didn't know if they were official part of the field.
Yeah. Just a, probably just a clarification of kind of why I'm here. Just there's a lot of moving parts tonight, right? There's a Board of Finance meeting going on. There's a recount of the ballots going on. So there's a lot of moving parts. That's why you'll see different people kind of up in different spots here tonight, including myself.
And coming and going.
Coming and going. Committee reports and communications.
Okay.
Laura is yours.
Cool. So there's, everything's going very well. I don't really have that much to report. Academically, not really that much, but a couple, I think November 10th, the students were, they had the option to take the AMC math exam. And I think 80 to 90 students chose to take that and a lot of math teachers gave them bonus points for it. So it's basically just like compete with people from around the nation and they don't like get graded on it or anything like here. But it was a good opportunity, I think. And then from a security standpoint, I know I was talking earlier in the year about how there were some problems with like the new pass system from a student perspective. It kind of like, especially for the seniors, it kind of took away some of our independence and we were kind of like upset about that at first. But I haven't really heard any negative comments about it since. So I guess just an adjustment period and I think we're all good there at this point. And third, fall sports just came to an end. So that was a really fun time, I think volleyball and I think field hockey, but don't quote me on that. Possibly soccer also made it to the conference and state tournaments. So that was really nice. And then also a couple of things about clubs and activities. On tomorrow, there's going to be the Men's Night Out concert for choirs, which is actually a district-wide thing, which is really cool. So they're going to have some elementary school and middle school boys come and sing with the a cappella groups at the high school, which should be a really fun time. And then on November 21st is Nothing But Trouble, which is like the girls' version of that. So that's also a district-wide thing and they have some elementary schools coming in. And then also from mostly just a musical perspective, but the gospel choir is probably the biggest club that we have here at Simsbury High School. And that group has probably like 50-plus members and they bring in people from outside the community as well. So that's really doing well. On the other hand, I was trying to start a club Unified Theater with students with disabilities. And that was really, really hard to get regular ed students to join in. So it's hard to say from an involvement perspective, like what the involvement is like here because we have some really huge clubs and some really tiny clubs. But overall, I think involvement is pretty strong. So that's all I have.
That's great. That's awesome. Todd?
I'll report later. Nothing for me, otherwise.
We had a curriculum meeting this morning and we discussed the credit, the number of credits for graduation. And we are working to make it a little bit more flexible for students. And, and so that's a great news because it was pretty rigid. And I think as we looked at it, we're extremely rigid for a lot of the students who are trying to reach their goals. And so it's exciting. More to come on that.
Absolutely. Jen?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the schools again for Veterans Day. Like we have this program where a lot of my, my friends', children in other districts don't have. And I think it's great for the kids to see and hear and sing in some grades about it. So I just wanted to say kudos to them.
Thanks.
Great call.
And they still do the pen.
They still do the peniton, both at the middle school and the high school.
Right.
Very successful.
Always been successful, so.
It's cool.
Good. Briefly, for me, we have the CAPE Conference again this year, starting on Thursday, Thursday through the weekend. I will be at the Delegate Assembly on Thursday. And that's the time where we adopt the resolutions going forward that we will be presenting to the General Assembly come January on behalf of School Districts Board, Boards of Education in Connecticut. And then Friday, Saturday, we will have a full conference. I know Sue will be coming, Matt will be coming. And so Commissioner will be there and also Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona will be there. And also the President of National School Board Association will be there. So it will be, we have 500 attendees this year, which is, which is great. And we're back to a full, full conference. And then we have a whole student panel on Saturday that will be there. And we've got some phenomenal, phenomenal speakers. So, so it will be a very jam-packed work weekend, but more to come from that. And tomorrow I have CRET Council meeting. And what I usually do as Chair of CRET Council is during Council comments at the end of the meeting is, is assign the CRET Council board members, since we are 35 districts around the table, possible homework ideas, things to consider for the following month's meeting. And so last month, I had asked the CRET Council members around the table to talk about some fuel and energy savings within their districts. And that's what we'll be having tomorrow. And I just received from Jason, a great summary of what we do here in Simsbury Public Schools. So we'll be sharing all our information with everyone. And it's great to be able to share something from our own district because many districts, as you said, for different, different days and different, different opportunities to get to know other districts within, well, crackers within the Hartford area of what we do and how we can better foster relationships and some of the things. So that's it.
Thank you.
Just to continue to update you on where we are with Latimer Lane after the action that you took at the tri-board meeting that our board hosted last Thursday night. Last night, the Board of Selectmen enthusiastically affirmed that decision to move forward with a new appropriation that includes the three alternates that you voted for in a unanimous vote to move it on recommended to the Board of Finance. That's the meeting that you spoke about, Jeff, that's competing with ours. That's happening right now. And it's expected at that meeting that it will get moved to a required public hearing that would be two weeks from tonight on Tuesday, November 29th. And that will take place at the library at 6:00, I want to say. We'll get you a time.
Yeah. I'll give you the update.
So, but anyway, Tuesday, November 29th will be
In the tariff room.
In the tariff room at the public library. All heading toward a referendum for early January to get the final funding for that. So it was a good meeting last night with the Board of Selectmen and hopefully a good one going on right now with the Board of Finance.
Yeah, great. Actually, I was going to reference what you were saying about the tri-board and then the Board of Selectmen. I just want to take a second and say thanks to both boards for the tri-board meeting. Those are, those are tough conversations, right? And that, those tough discussion and we worked through it. And I appreciate greatly the respect and candor that all three boards showed each other in the tri-board meeting. And then thanks to the Board of Selectmen for their support last night for us for, for moving forward.
Great. Just two things. I want to share that we had a wonderful, full-day professional development on the eighth election day. The theme was around engagement and how do we think differently about how we engage students and how we engage each other in the work of the district? So we had in the morning over 60 staff members presenting to their colleagues in different areas of expertise, whether that be a new engaging technology or some best practices that they felt really worked in the classroom. So it was an exciting day and, and we put that time to very, very good use. The other thing that I just want to mention is that Maggie, led by Maggie Seidel and her team, we are offering a STEM night this coming Thursday at Simsbury High School. We have almost 200 elementary school students signed up. That's a pre-signups. We're very excited. There is going to be a robotics demonstration and some other interactive activities. So very excited about lighting those fires of, of passion in our students related to STEM. So.
That's really exciting.
Yeah. Terrific.
Gosh, I gotta put my readers. First up on the recommended actions is the approval of the minutes of the October 11th meeting. They are in your packet under Exhibit 1.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of.
Thank you, Tara. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lydia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I forgot. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Next is the approval of the Squadron Line HVAC education specs.
This is where you're gonna wish that Jason Casey didn't have to go to the Board of Finance meeting. But I'm gonna try to do the best I can here. So this particular action that is required because of a pending deadline relates, you've probably seen in the media that there are some opportunities at the state level for grants related to improving indoor air quality in schools, sort of following COVID when that topic got a lot of play. And it's, it's on a pretty tight deadline. In fact, it's coming up on December 1st that districts have to have at least an initial application pulled together. In terms of, and this is through the same group that oversees projects like Latimer Lane. So this is the Office of School Construction and Grants that would be receiving an application. And upon looking at the criteria, the focus that Jason decided to try for some grant dollars is at Squadron Line, which is a, as you saw in his exhibit, it is a air handling system that is the original to the building. And the other focus on Squadron Line, because we have had some minor air quality issues in that building. We had some remediation work around some small samples of mold that came out a few summers ago. There's also a higher level of humidity in that building. So what you can see in his narrative for you is that what's happened is there was never any central air conditioning, obviously, 52 years ago when Squadron Line got built. So there's been a very heavy patchwork of window air conditioners, some split units. When you look at the building from the outside, you'll see window air conditioning units all over the place. So this is to, in addition to new air handling units, two new air handling units, two new condensers in order to bring air conditioning more centralized to more of Squadron Line. So it's not, it's not an enormous project. The, the estimates that Jason is getting in the early scope of this is about $225,000. And up to a third of that could be grant-funded. So it could be a very economical project for us if we're able to succeed in this grant. For that amount of money, we would probably be looking to our own capital non-recurring fund as opposed to going out to the town to look for funding on this if we're successful with the grant. And the requirements on this is that the specifications need both your approval and the Board of Selectmen's approval before December 1st. So that's why the action is required tonight. And then thankfully, it will be Jason going to the Board of Selectmen on November 28th to hopefully get their approval. So I would be happy to answer questions if I could, but I'm probably not going to be able to do much beyond Jason's narrative as he presented it.
Just a question on timing. Just anything else you need from us? I'm just looking at, we're sitting here on November 15th. You got the Thanksgiving week next week. These are due just early December. I just want to make sure we, you guys all have everything you need.
No, it's the, it's those two votes that he needs to be able to, to say have happened. He's got the rest of the application ready to go.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, great. Great. Can I get a motion from somebody? It's right in front of you under Exhibit 2.
I will move that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the Squadron Line Elementary School Air Quality Improvement Project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Off and running. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Education Association. Does Todd?
I'll start and then I'll share this with Neil. Our biggest assets in the district is our employees. And the biggest group of bargaining unit, union within that is our, our certified teachers, the SEA, Simsbury Education Association. Every three years, well, it's been every three years, we have our, our contract with, with the SEA. It's a, a long, thoughtful process, goes through a couple of months of negotiation meetings and it ends with a lengthy mediation meeting. The, the reason for, for, for that amount of time is we want to make sure we understand what each other thinks and come to a nice conclusion with, with each, with each, with each group. On, on the board side, we're, we're led with all of the heavy lifting really by, by Neil. And he guides the Personnel Negotiation Committee, which is myself, Brian, Jeff and Lydia. And on the, on the SEA side, a lot of hard-working individuals, Jamie Sipa, Cara Masler, Haley Brown, Brian Foreman and Tim Walzak. A lot of hard work put in by a lot of people and we end up with, with, with good results. And I'm gonna, I'll turn it over to Neil to give you the details.
All right. The, I'm gonna kind of follow the exhibit and hit the highlights. Not every single piece of the negotiations. Certainly want to thank the support of the Board Negotiations Committee. Out of all the jobs that board members get, this one is the most arduous. When teacher negotiations come up, it's a lot of hours in a short span of a few weeks. So to those of you who turned in those hours of volunteer work, thank you very much. We appreciate being able to get to this outcome. So obviously wages are always the most paid attention to part of a significant negotiation. And we entered a negotiated, negotiation season during an economic time of clear inflation, more so than we have in the last several times we've done this. And we knew going in that settlements during this time period were coming in higher than they had for municipalities over the last couple of years. So through our council, we were advised that most of the settlements across the state were coming in, in the, in the neighborhood of a 12% total figure over the course of three years. And that became sort of a guiding target for us and where we ended. So at the end of the day, after both sides had a chance to move some of the dollars on the scale around, the total package adds up to 11.98% over three years, which is slightly below the state average and the number that it was an appropriate target. It's gonna do two things. Because we have more of our teachers, we're lucky to have many experienced teachers at the top of the scale already. We have what is called a lower step cost, which is the amount of arrays sort of taken up by the people moving up experience. So with an average settlement, what's important to say is we're both able to make our teachers more competitive at the top. And you can see that there's a dollar figure of $2,800 in each year of the contract that we added to the top. That's gonna help us close a gap with some, you know, important districts that we compete against, namely Farmington, where their teachers at the top had gotten slightly ahead of ours. To be able to have a negotiation like this where we can close that gap is a good outcome for our teachers. And, and an appropriate one, given the overall wage settlement. But in addition, we also made sure that dollars went on to the steps because there are places, especially at the entry level of the salary schedule and in some of the, if you're about four or five years in as a teacher in Simsbury, some of those needed attention that, and so you can see there that the, at the end of the day, it shook out to a $2,500 amount added onto the steps. And that's how you get to the overall. I will point out importantly that the SEA also agreed to allow us to insert a step. We had a very large gap between the next-to-last step and the last step. And part of our negotiation position was to insert another salary year onto the schedule. So that was important for our board side of the negotiation. So that's, that's what I'll comment about with wages. But a really important part of our negotiation this year, focused on needed insurance matters that, so less of a focus on the cost share, although we did increase the premium cost share by 1% in each of the three years. 1% in the first year and then it stayed there. But important advances that we had gotten previously with other groups related to prescription packages that are allowing both the board and members to save money when, when the overall, well, save, protect the increases the prescription drug costs, prescription drug costs are experiencing. And in addition to that, a medical management program on large procedures that are very expensive and a recommendation from Cigna that we really needed to make this an important part of our negotiations. And to be able to achieve that in this negotiation with the support of the SEA was, it's gonna hopefully yield dividends down the road as we deal with increased insurance costs. So those are the two. Wages and insurance are always the biggest. And I'll go quickly through the rest because the other adjustments really had to do with just economic adjustments that we had fallen behind. There was an increase related to life insurance based on just kind of an old dollar amount that was still left from a contract in addition to a slight increase in long-term disability. In addition to that, after-school work for teachers and stipends were increased by a modest amount. Importantly, it was a very significant part of the negotiations for the SEA, feeling that during COVID especially, but at other times too, teachers had sometimes been asked to take on substitute coverages. So, and at times when somebody is out at the secondary level, people have been known to pick up what's called a sixth class. And you're teaching an extra class instead of a duty. They had been compensated for it. They will now be compensated for it, similar to what many other districts have done at one-fifth of their salary for the, for, based on the per diem amount of what they're doing. So that was a very important point for the SEA. In addition to if we need to, and we try to avoid it, but occasionally it happens, if we need to ask a teacher to cover during their assigned prep period that they would get a small honorarium kind of acknowledging that you had eaten into contractual time to ask them to cover a class that had no substitute. So the, related to those things in language, they did allow us to have some more flexibility with hiring new teachers in hard-to-hire areas. So that was appreciated. And some changes related, one was statutorily driven. You may recall a piece of legislation last year that teachers need to be guaranteed 30 minutes for lunch. Our contractual language was 25. So we have made that adjustment. And in addition, 30 minutes a week more of prep time, which is actually reflecting the practice, but it was important for the union that we codify it. So a lot of issues, a very large negotiation. We are, I am extremely pleased to report that the SEA held a meeting yesterday, held a ratification vote through the Google platform. It closed at 4 o'clock and at, I think, 4:03, I got the text from JB Sipa saying that the union has overwhelmingly ratified the contract just in time for our meeting. So hopefully, so hopefully this vote is there, the motion is there at the end of the exhibit. But happy to take any questions. I know that was a lot.
I have just a comment. Really, first I want to thank Todd and you, Neil, and I wish Matt were here for this. The leadership you guys showed in all the work you put in is greatly appreciated and I think it showed throughout the process. I want to thank the teachers too. This, these are, again, as I was saying earlier, these are really hard conversations, you know? You're talking about people's livelihoods. You're talking about everything from dollars to prep time and everything in between. And, and they were, and they were tough conversations. But again, everybody was respectful. I appreciate the great thanks to the SEA. They were very well represented and, and we had some really good conversations. I think we have a fair settlement. You know, I don't think everybody's completely satisfied and I think that probably makes for the, the ideal settlement. So just, just a lot of thanks. It's a lot of work. I think people don't necessarily understand how much work goes into these conversations, but just thanks to all, all around. Because I know these can be quite contentious in other locales. We do actually need a motion on our side. Can somebody, Todd?
I will move that the Board of Education ratified the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Education Association for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
And as a board member who did not have to sit in on that, I want to thank you all very much. It is really important and we have wonderful teachers that we want to make sure stay here. And we want to make sure that they have a good place to be and we're, we're all, we're being fair and they're being fair to us. And I like the way we all work together and I really appreciate all the work you did.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passed. Next on the agenda is the cancellation of the November 22nd meeting.
I make a motion, we cancel the 22nd meeting. It's the week of Thanksgiving and we've been meeting a lot lately, all of us. And I think we can, we can do without it and meet again in December.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
But to remind you, November 29th, public hearing of the Board of Finance, so.
We'll all be there on the 29th.
Okay, just wanna.
Susan's never gonna let me do this again. I'm canceling meetings. Great.
What happened?
Next is on our agenda is the Henry James Memorial School Report. We apologize for not being able to do this last time, but we.
Yeah. We're really excited to have Principal Beaker and Assistant Principal Petrella here to tell us about all things Henry James Memorial School. So Scott and Jacqueline are going to review some specific actions taken at the middle school last year and how things went. And they're going to discuss some survey results of the climate survey specific to Henry James, some student performance results, and then really talk about the work that they have already launched at the middle school this year under three themes of engagement, student growth and instruction. So really excited to have you both here and take it away, Scott.
So, so happy to be here. Sorry we're not in our library. You were all queued up to do that. But before we start, I think Sue outlined our presentation pretty well. I didn't want to forget two items as you were going around. It's like a lot of our action plans is rolling now, which is exciting. So I can talk to some of the things that we're doing. But Unified Theater, we just had an amazing performance on Friday with our group at Henry James. So while, you know, Emily, you might not be able to see the, the fruits of that, we have students coming up to the high school that are ready to take on those challenges and, and beautiful partnerships between our general ed and special education students. It was wonderful. And then our Veterans Day, just an outline of what we do at Henry James. We had, it was more like Veterans Week. We had, because we have our. was more like Veterans Week, we had, because we have our connections periods with these extended block schedules, we had, I believe, a total of five local veterans come in over the course of two days and speak to our seventh and eighth graders about their experiences. They had slide shows talking about like submarine life and, and all this stuff, it was very interesting, super engaging, nice experience for our kids, so, so that was great. So, getting on.
Like you too, you seemed to get in the jazz.
I was, really excited about it.
The kids asked great questions and they were engaged, and, you know, because the guys talked for a long time, and.
We had like an 85-year-old guy up talking about the Cuban Missile Crisis and being on a destroyer outside of Cuba, and it was just fascinating. It was really great, it was really great. So, to get to our highlights, to back up a little bit and get into last year, as you know, we started the year with masks on and all these protocols and everything, so to, to sit here and talk about the highlights out of last year of how we came out from that and really, I think, reemerged back to a lot of what makes Henry James great was awesome. So some things we did, I mean, you're gonna hear more about a lot of this as we go through the presentation, but just some high-level highlights, we had an SCL committee that really drove some major changes to our HJ Way, it was student-driven, Jaclyn's gonna share a little bit more about that, but you'll hear about our new logo that you see up there, and our, one of our new mottos is to roar, with our lion being the mascot. Our extracurricular life really took off, 60%, 60% of kids participated in at least one thing last year, which is high for historical data at Henry James. Had a lot of new clubs created, intermurals were really well-attended in the back half of the year. We had team days, kids were engaged in projects and classes again, you know, the rows came apart and kids got back into desks. You know, in terms of the national competitions and stuff that, that I think you heard a lot about at the high school, we didn't have as many of those up and running at the middle school, but we did have two students recognized nationally for their artwork, a sculpture piece, received like first place nationally, it was pretty awesome, it's boy Jaden Martin. And then we, we got our student, our community service activities up and running again with PJ Day, we had some, some, the Penathon started again for Henry James, so a lot of, a lot of good things. One of our students, you know, unfortunately, was recently diagnosed with cancer, and she started this really cool initiative to create kits for teens who are newly admitted to CCMC, and we donated a ton of money to get that off the ground at CCMC, so we did some really neat things, community service-wide. And then something that's pretty cool is we've started a new tradition at Henry James where grade levels have team assemblies, where they can come down to the auditorium, celebrate work, give prizes, it's all run by the teachers and the team leaders, it's pretty cool. So, so there's some of the high-level highlights from last year, just some pictures of that, we did bring back the musical, we had Frozen, it was sold out for six straight shows, which was awesome. You could see a little visual of our packed auditorium there for a team assembly, kids working in groups again, you could see the intermurals. I didn't mention this, but a really great fundraiser that Mrs. Kotler put together was this initiative where we took and recycled bottle caps, bottle caps and tops of soda cans to make park benches and wheelchairs for veterans out of it to recycle and do that, so we're doing that again right now, that's, that's going on again.
So can we save bottle caps and tabs for you?
Absolutely, yes. And if you, if you have someone on your street, it's, it's a huge competition between the connections classes, so.
Or somebody in your neighborhood.
Anyone in your neighborhood who goes to Henry James, you can certainly shoot bottle caps and, and tops to their way, and they'd be, they'd be grateful, but they're coming in by like the bucket loads to Henry James, so that's pretty cool. So, so highlights from last year. So, getting, switching gears and getting into just the data piece of things, again, this is high-level, but I did want to give you a peek, I, I got feedback that you appreciated how I showed last year, kind of what we do with the data, so I'm gonna do that again this year. I think, much like most districts, our data's kind of all over the place. I think, you know, COVID has, has pushed some areas where we're doing really well, others where we have needs of improvement, and it's, it's, you know, it's a lot to look at. So, you know, we're treating this as a baseline year of, okay, we had some regular instruction going on last year, this is where our results were, and this is where we're gonna build from. So I'll just take you through the, the ELA math and science. So in, in ELA, percent of kids at goal was 72%, this is 9% down from last year. However, when you look at our comparative Derg districts, we're only 4% from the top in our Derg, just about everybody took a hit in ELA, so whether that's related to COVID in some way, was the test particularly hard, I don't know. You know, our, our area principals have been talking about this. The decline was predominantly in our eighth grade, the seventh to sixth, sixth to seventh grade kind of stayed steady, but historically, we're over 80%, that's, that's our target for this year. No Derg, Derg B school was over 80% this year in ELA. So, we're, you know, we're looking at the results, and I'll get to that in a minute in terms of what we do with that. Math, I think, is a good news, bad news. We stayed steady, so there's no decline, like we held the line in math in terms of where we were the year before. However, it's just not where we want to be in relation to our Derg, Derg B, you know, I wouldn't say competitors, but comparison districts. And, you know, I'm gonna share a little bit about what our plans are for math, you know we've been working on math, it's not, that's not a secret, and it's something we, you know, we need to continue to pay attention to. But like I said, I think a bright spot is there was no decline, we, we kind of stayed just level in math. In science, we have a celebration, we are the top scoring school in our Derg, we went up 1% from the cohort before, so we, you know, we've done quite well in our science education. So, it's, it's interesting, like I said, it's, the scores are kind of all over the place right now, but I don't think we're alone. When, when I talk to my, you know, colleagues in, in surrounding districts, they have kind of the same thing. You don't see any one district where their scores are all top, you know, everywhere. So the other piece is, we set a lot of our targets based not necessarily on just this one indicator, the Sback, we use the STAR test as a way to kind of monitor progress throughout the year, and when we look at that data, our students were meeting their growth targets, and so when you peel it back a little bit on the Sback, you see kids improving, but not enough to like cross over that threshold into goal, or cross over that threshold into exceeds. And so that's something that we look at on a student-by-student basis, and what I wanted to show you, again, last year, I showed you the chart on the top left here, where each one of these rows are students' data, and it goes back to like fifth grade we look at, their STAR data and their Sback data, and so we look student by student on our teams when we have our hands-up time and with counselors, and we ask the hard question with every student, you know, are they on track? Are they improving? Was there a decline? Is the decline because of some academic, and this is where we have to have teacher judgment, is the decline because of academic gaps they have, or are there some social, emotional stuff where they're, you know, did they have a particularly hard year socially with that adjustment into Henry James? And so our intervention in terms of how to get students to perform really varies student by student. Some of it might belong a lot to a guidance counselor, to try to get the student, attendance is sometimes an issue, like getting the student to school, or if they are academic issues, then that's where we're looking at our intervention department, which I'm gonna talk a little bit more about. What we're adding on to this, this year, is looking at our performance as a whole, like as a whole school, and looking at what are the areas where a preponderance of students have had trouble. And so we look back, and so in the bottom right, you can see I pulled out just some of the standards where we noticed that students haven't, haven't performed at the rates that they, they would have, that we would expect. So a good example is connotation and denotation in ELA, like that's a skill we uncovered that, that students didn't do so that well, well with it, and that's not really taught explicitly in our curriculum. So, back to the drawing board on our PLCs, and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, weave that into a lot of the lessons throughout the year to make sure students are firmed up on that skill. The grade eight math one there that talks about geometry, that's one where it's a timing issue, where that always comes after the Sback is, is administered, so we don't teach that skill until after the Sback's administered, how can we rearrange our timing of units to weave some more of that in so students can, can get more success with that, right? So those are the kinds of decisions we're making on a database, it's gross oversimplification, but I just wanted you to get kind of a peek at, what do we do when we're looking at the data, and how do we, how do we make adjustments and, and move forward with kits? Because you hear about PLC, you hear about the professional development, this is the kind of stuff that's going on during that time.
Scott, can you talk a little bit about the spiral review too, because I think that that's really important.
Yes, so, I mean, so that's exactly, you know, what we're, we're doing there, is that you take a look at like the math content piece with volume, area, and surface area. If, if the kids are taking algebra in eighth grade, they're not really doing a lot of work with that, they're doing work with functions, they're doing work with polynomials, they're, and so they're not seeing geometry on a, on a somewhat regular basis, so what we're working in is like, especially on like those block days, 10 minutes at the start of class, some sample problems to get kids in groups talking about the volume of a pyramid and how it might, you know, impact some real-world problem solving, and they're working on, so we're, you know, we're, we're just dropping these experiences with CE standards that if they just had exposure, I think they'd be fine, throughout the year as they go through the units. So that's kind of, you hear the word like spiral review in the elementary presentation in, in a while, that's what we're talking about, is that we just keep revisiting these concepts and touching on them so the students, it's not brand-new when we do like a quick review before the test, like that, we know doesn't work, right?
I think another key thing that they're doing is they're, in their assessments and in their questioning, they're modeling some of the Sback questions, because those are so different than what you see on STAR, than what you see on a traditional math test or ELA test, so part of it is getting kids used to the language and the wording and how questions are asked on Sback, and so they're doing a lot of work to make that happen throughout the year, rather than that last-minute kind of cram session before the Sback test and doing the, they have interim assessments that they can use, and instead of doing them in March, they're doing them throughout the year, so the kids get the practice along the way, which I think will have a great impact on them, because part of, in math, is even the reading and understanding what the question's asking.
See, you say you give them like model Sback tests?
Yeah, or even on their.
Just a question, like here or there, you know.
Even on their end-of-unit assessments, you'll see a question that's more Sback, like which of the following equations are not equivalent to the one here, you know, instead of saying, simplify this equation, right? So it's, it's asking a question in a different way.
Think about doing a model Sback test at the end of the year after they've had geometry to see if they would have picked up on that.
So, that, yeah, so that's when we give the STAR assessment, you know, that's a final assessment we give that kind of picks up where our students, so that's where I said before, our internal assessments are telling us the students are catching the skills, right? So it's just a matter of, of I think, doing some rearrangement and doing some spiral review to make sure the kids have had some exposure to some of those. So yes, we, yes, we do. All right, so this is, so this is one level of data that we use to plan for the next year. Jaclyn's gonna take us through the next level of data, which were the survey results, I know you heard a little bit about this at the high school report, so I'm gonna hand that off to you.
So at the end of the year, students, staff, and families took the Panorama survey, and we wanted to kind of align ourselves with the high school and show some of the same data that the high school showed. It was given, we would say, at the end of a very challenging year, so some of the data does reflect that for both students, teachers, and families. So you'll see the data, you know, for example, students had a 60% favorability towards feeling safe at school and 49% positive climate, but as we kind of combed through the data, we felt like the, we had pages and pages and pages, countless pages of comments, that's really where we got the information and what we could, you know, what was actionable and valuable for us so that we could make decisions on. So we really want to highlight those strengths and concerns and what we've done to address them. So with the student survey, overall, they felt safe in the building, that was, you know, resounding in the, in the comments, so it makes us feel good that kids have a safe place to come every day. While there were certain things that we were dealing with on a daily basis, they felt safe in the building. Again, as Scott highlighted, students were really excited to have clubs and activities coming off of two years of really not being able to be involved in the greater school community, they were so happy the school was buzzing after school every day, which was really exciting. We talked about, actually at the last board meeting, about the connections classes that we have, and we expanded it to the whole building, so our UA teachers, music teachers, wellness teachers, everyone has a connections, which created a really small group for kids to personally get to know a teacher and build relationships, and I think we saw the benefits of that as they kind of reacclimated to a traditional school life. And again, the team assemblies, I mean, the kids, we have kids asking every day, when are we gonna have an assembly? I have one girl that comes up every single day, because they love going in the auditorium, they love the, the spirit and the energy, and, you know, teachers were, kids could write praise and comments about each other, and they would read those, we had prizes from tickets that teachers were giving out, they would review school rules, so there was a lot of stuff going on at those assemblies that really got kids excited. And then as far as concerns and trends, some are typical middle school responses, they want more water bottle fillers, lunch quality, they want, especially the boys want bigger lunches, maybe more variety, they want air conditioning, as I was listening to the squadron line proposal, and one of the concerns with the bathrooms, and, and we talked a lot about it stemmed from some of the TikTok stuff that happened at the beginning of the year last year where.
Don't even say that.
Where kids were trashing the bathrooms, and that's something that we had to deal with, so bathrooms weren't always a safe place for kids, but I think we got there by the end of the year. And something that has traditionally come up is homework consistency, and a lot of it is across team, and so kids still talk about, you know, one team has more homework than another team, and so that, those comments did surface throughout the data.
Fascinating piece on the homework was like, when I stepped in as principal at Henry James, that was number one topic on parents' minds. If you did a Ctrl+F search in the parent survey comments, homework didn't come up, not once.
So some improvement's been made.
Fascinating, like, so the kids are still talking about it, but it's, the parent issue, and we've been working on it, we've been working on some of that, I wouldn't say we're there yet, but we've been working on it, so it's just an interesting piece of data that wasn't there.
And coming off of the pandemic years, where they really didn't have homework.
Yeah.
So there was a big adjustment coming back, especially last year where there was more of a return to normal. So HJMS had a homework study that they were engaged in prior to the pandemic, so we've been revisiting that and kind of taking a different spin and really working with the department supervisors of looking at homework consistency across the department, because if all the math teachers do the same, and ELA and social studies, that creates consistency across a team. So it's not necessarily about making teams consistent, but more departments consistent and looking at their homework practices and, you know, what they're sending home with students, so we're working on that this year. One of the big things that I didn't mention it, but the dress code was a concern for kids, they felt our dress code, which it was, was really outdated, you know, it was fingertips and specific widths for straps and, and whatnot, and certainly very hard, if anybody's a mom, particularly of a young lady, shopping to abide by the dress code. And so we had a committee of teachers who volunteered to really analyze the dress code, and it was an incredible experience, they researched other schools' dress codes, they read literature, they surveyed students, staff, and families about the dress code, and they took all of that information and created a new dress code that was much more inclusive, kind of was respectful of people's different bodies and shapes and sizes, and the win for our kids really was wearing hats, so, which has actually had such a positive impact on our environment, because teachers aren't focused on that as much as they are just building relationships with students. So that was really a great experience for the whole building in general. We are working with maintenance to increase our water bottle filling station, so that's exciting for the kids. One of the things for safety is we increased our hallway monitoring, so we have teachers out in the hall, which is a practice that hadn't been in place in a while, which has kind of helped with the behavior, and they don't know when, because we don't have it every period, every day, but it's really had an impact on, you know, the environment in the hallways. The roar goals, you'll see on each one, we'll speak to it when we talk about our roar. So the faculty and staff, I think what we really take pride in is, is how the faculty feels like they belong and they're part of a community, and it really shows that HJMS is a family, the camaraderie is, is really strong. They also appreciated our focus on staff wellness, because coming off of the pandemic, you know, people were struggling, and we took time during faculty meetings and professional development to highlight, you know, staff wellness and making sure they take time to take care of themselves, you gotta put your own mask on first, right before you tend to everybody else, so that was really important for them. The behavior was probably their greatest concern, because we definitely, as students readjusted, we had some students who hadn't been in a building for almost two years, readjusted to that structure, there were increased behaviors, and part of it too, we've talked about, is students having masks on and teachers having masks, you can't read expressions, you can't understand how people are feeling, and it did create some more behaviors between students and whatnot. In the hallways, we definitely had a lot of, they're packed, they're jammed, which created more opportunity for physical interactions. And with all of that, communication back to teachers was a concern, because we were dealing with so much at such a high volume and a quick rate, that we weren't always able to get back to teachers in a timely fashion about how we handled stuff. So that's something that we've been working on this year. So as we mentioned, that we've increased our hallway supervision as well as the amount of people in the lunchroom, which this year with the 30-minute lunches has been beneficial, because it's a little more downtime for kids, they eat quickly, so there's more downtime for them, so we have more adults in the cafeteria. have more adults in the cafeteria, which has worked out really well. We created new online discipline forms, which have been great. So the teachers can access them online. They send them to us. We can fill out our action steps immediately and send them back to the teachers. We, you know, try to have face-to-face conversations too, but at least is a quick turnaround for them. And we've also created team drives where we put students' discipline forms in for the team leaders to see. So they can look at trends and patterns of what's happening on their team and they talk about it in their weekly team meeting. So it's been a really great change for the faculty. In looking at behavior, we created trauma book club. So we selected, I think it was six books.
Four books.
Four books. And teachers had the chance to choose from these books and were reading them over the course of the year and they've created book clubs. So every few faculty meetings, they sit with the book clubs and talk about their assigned chapters and how are we engaging with students, building relationships with students, reacting to students who have dealt, you know, who have gone through trauma. And finally, with the family survey trends, again, the connections was a highlight for families that students are really building strong relationships within the building. And the clubs and activities, they are happy to see their kids involved and happy to see them doing things. So that's been great. They appreciate the weekly listservs and, you know, Scott often puts in tidbits of advice, you know, if you happen to see this on TikTok or you happen to read about this. So parents really appreciated that and teams began last year doing newsletters home, which updated them on the more academic side. And parents really appreciated that. As far as concerns, and I think, you know, a lot of them jumped from early elementary back into middle school and they miss the FaceTime with teachers. We don't have conferences. They aren't volunteering like they do at the elementary schools. So they really miss kind of being a part of the community. And we also threw some of that notice that, you know, in the ever-changing world, parenting the middle school child is, is not easy. And they're looking for support and help on how to do that. Found a lot of our phone calls with parents were like, what do I do now? And, you know, the constant want to know what's going on in the building with their students, with other students. So communication is really the thread through a lot of the family survey data. So we have, we returned to our in-person open house this year, which was great. We are examining, we have a committee that's looking at in-person conferences, which is something that the middle school has not done. So we've been looking at what do other schools do and talking to teachers about what would be the best format so that we can, you know, provide opportunities for parents to meet with teachers. We're working with our PTC and some outside practitioners on offering a parenting series throughout the year. So it's going to focus on everything from drugs and vaping to anxiety, mindfulness. We're kicking it off in December with a documentary on, it's called Screenagers. So it's the effects of screens on teenagers and the impact that it has. So we're going to be offering a viewing of that with a Q and A panel after with, you know, Scott will be on the panel, some of our mental health staff, hopefully a student will be on the panel. So I think it's a great kickoff for that series. You want to be on it?
Emily, you're being called back.
I know, I'm being recruited.
Called back.
Is this limited to HJMS?
We're starting, we're starting with the seventh and eighth grade.
We're going to, we're going to see, I'll talk more about that in a bit. Yep.
So one of the things that we're super excited about is kind of the HJ way we realized hadn't really been touched for a good 15 plus years. So we really involved, part of our SEL committee involved students. We had students brainstorm, brainstorm words about what it meant to be a middle school student. And then once we got the brainstorm of words, they narrowed it down. We had a vote amongst the students and this is what we came out with, respect, responsibility and integrity. And we really thought integrity was kind of a more grown-up word, which is great for kids because they're used to like at squadron, you respect, responsibility and kindness, right? So kind of step it up in middle school. So we really celebrated this at the beginning of the year. Our first meeting with students was all about roar. And we showed a video that we found about the seven characteristics of a lion, which were really great. And we've, every month are going to hone in on one of those characteristics. So for November, we're looking at lions are leaders. So we tied it into Veterans Day. Students have filled out forms about how they're leaders. All of our faculty has filled out forms about how they're leaders and they're posted around the building. So we can celebrate how we contribute to the community. And then within their connections at the beginning of the year, everyone set roar goals on respect, responsibility, integrity. And then that final roar goal is kind of like, we called it our fun goal. Like, how are we going to make school fun again and engaging in a place where we all want to be? And students made those goals and then teachers did too. And it's been really awesome to hear what teachers have done. And it could be for the adult community, it could be for the kids. Like, we have a teacher whose goal is, is to bake cookies for the faculty. And like every other Friday, she comes around with cookies. And Scott's doing a ping pong tournament. I've been doing lunches in the courtyards with kids. We have teachers who are doing the MVP of the day in their classes. Some teachers are joining a club that they've never done. So it could be something big, it could be something small. And it's really like, teachers are excited about it, which is, which is great. And we've really tried to get students involved as well. You can see the bulletin board that greets you when you walk in that, that students help make.
Awesome. Thank you. So you're going to hear some, some repeat. Obviously, this is, so we took, take all that data and then we make our plan for the year. Obviously, everything is couched in our Board of Ed goals. But then also within our vision of the graduate, we are, you know, the high school's doing some amazing work with this, but we are also looking at, when we're doing teacher observations, looking at these particular attributes when we're, we're looking for lesson design and all of that. So, so that continues, that work continues at Henry James. And boiled this all down to this one document that I use with our staff to say like, this is our roadmap. This is our direction in terms of where we're going. So all that data led to this. And then I just simplified it for you with just some high level points. And again, a lot of repetition for what you said, but I think it's important to just say, okay, like this is our plan moving forward for the year. So in the topic of engagement, we're a huge focus on reviving and establishing new events at HJMS. You have a little poster there for our Fall Fest. Almost 200 kids came out for the Fall Fest on October 28th. We had like hay bales and pumpkin painting and all kinds of really-
Haunted hallway.
Haunted hallway, all kinds of cool stuff on there. And, and they have a spring event. The student council is already planning a spring event. We're bringing back Neon Night for those of you that are old HJMSers. Neon Night is coming back.
Volunteer, volunteer.
Yeah. So we've got-
You can lead the committee.
I see emotion on the floor, people.
I second them.
But it's, it just was so, like any teacher who was there or parents who came to pick up were like, oh my gosh, it was so good to see. It was like a Hallmark movie with all the kids doing, doing all the, all this cool fall stuff. So the roar goal Jacqueline talked about, just all this fun stuff that we're trying to keep, keep it fun at school. The PTC family learning series is really exciting. Just a little bit more about Screenagers. A parent had brought this to my attention. It's kind of like, if you remember dating myself a little bit, like the Race to Nowhere movie of the kind of grassroots that it is. This is a grassroots film as well called Screenagers. We're going to do it on December 8th. It's going to be six to eight in the auditorium. I'm going to send out ticketing. We have like an online ticketing thing for it too, tomorrow out to parents. And we'll see what we get for response. What, what my initial plan for this is to have it be a seventh and eighth grade night, just because of the content and what we might talk about in terms of what you could be exposed to on a screen and that kind of stuff. But we'll see what the, we'll see what, how the tickets come in. And then what I'd like to do in this, in the spring is welcome our fifth and sixth grade parents to Henry James and talk about it more from the stand of, okay, you're just about to get a phone or you're making that decision. And so that's slightly different Q and A with a panel than maybe with the seventh and eighth graders. So, but we'll see. If we don't get a huge turnout, maybe we open it up and make it bigger for this December meeting. So, but more to come on that. But we're excited and that's going to kick off a number of parent engagement things we're going to do throughout the year. So very excited about that. Continued focus on communication. If you, one of my other roar goals besides the ping pong tournament is to really step up my game on our Instagram account. So if you don't subscribe to the HJ Instagram account, it's, it's on Instagram. It's at HJMS Lions.
You did drop off a little during construction.
Yeah, I dropped off a little bit. I went, Anjanet, a funny side story, like two weeks ago, I was on my bike, I was exercising and Anjanet emailed and, or texted me and said, hey, who took over the Instagram account? And I said, wait, what do you mean? Because I had been posting a lot. So she didn't believe it was me that was doing that. But so there's a lot on there, like everything I've talked about with Fall Fest, it says videos on there about that. And I'm using it as a way to model for students as well. So when I take their picture in class, like if they're working in a group, I say, hey, is it okay if I post this on Instagram? Show them the picture. And a lot of times they, no, take it again. Great. You know, but that's modeling for them. And I talked to them about this in assembly, like that's best practice with social media. And that's just another way for us to try to teach them how to, how to more appropriately engage with social media, right? We talked about the trauma book clubs, very excited about that. When we talk about student growth, we are using our data to guide our intervention. I've already kind of given you a little bit of a tour of what we do. What I didn't share is another initiative is having students involved in this conversation, in this process. And off to the side, there's like a little reflection sheet. So after we give the STAR, we give the students their results. They can read what those standards are. They know what they have to work on. And so we have them do a little reflection on, you know, where was your mindset when you were taking the test? You know, now that you've seen these standards that you still need to work on, how might we weave those into what Sue was saying is to some spiral review and individualize some of their intervention as well. Again, we're continuing to redesign our intervention program. Last year, we added the full-time math intervention teacher. And so that work continues. We've added a tier two class there as well. And then we've also added with our Title I funds, a tutor that assists with academic skills. So it's like a study skills class where, so if, if that's an area where you're really falling down as you hit the middle school, going from two classes in sixth grade to eight and the organization's overwhelming you, we can refer to the study skills teacher to help with some of that.
They never have it before. So that's exactly the place it should be. That's so critical. And it, that's just so important. I'm so glad to hear that that's coming back. So that's real, it used to be there and it needs to come back. I'm so glad.
And we talked about too, even at the beginning of like next year, in our connections classes, having like, kind of like a-
Building some universal lessons in connections as well. But that one-on-one help is, is sorely needed, you know?
Really, really needed.
So, so it's good success there. And then I've talked about this in prior years, just collaboration across the departments on priority skills. So math, one of their big things they have to work on is like when you get those big giant problems of the application. And so the math department supervisor is working with our family consumer science team to say, okay, like when you do this assessment, you're doing a recipe, hey, can you add in a day or part of your assessment to triple the recipe? And so then now they're working with, how do I, you know, do three times a fourth of a cup of something? Or how do I half a third cup? You know, so alterations to recipes and costs and some of that. So they're working across departments on, on their skills as well. So exciting work there. Finally, instruction, we, we've talked about much of this already. Homework policy is going to continue. We are going to reengage with our practice of peer visits. Obviously, you couldn't do this with COVID where you had teachers in the math department go visit the language arts department and, and talk about instruction and how we keep kids engaged and that sort of thing. And then obviously, we're continuing to work on our curriculum revision with equity and vision of graduate. So last thing I want to leave you with is just nothing like a picture is worth a thousand words and probably a video is worth even more. It's just a little video tour of what the first couple of months at Henry James was like.
With our new theme song.
With our new theme song. And maybe we can get her to come to Henry James sometime.
Got to work on that.
Awesome.
That's great.
Any questions for Scott and Jacqueline?
That is great. Is that on like your website, on the website at all?
Not, because I don't have like super permission from every.
Of course, what am I saying?
We have all that. So that was before I, that's before I started my practice of asking every time I took a picture.
It's just great.
Emily, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. So first of all, I don't remember that much of middle school because it was four years ago. But all of my most positive memories of it are the teacher, like positive teacher interactions. And I'm really happy to hear that the teacher camaraderie is still like being prioritized because I think I wouldn't have had the same experience if the teachers didn't feel the belonging that they do at school. And I also really loved the connections class when I was there, like my eighth grade connections teacher, I babysit these kids all the time. We're just like friends now. So it's, it's pretty awesome. And also the STAR reflection thing, I'm super happy to see that that's there. I don't think we had that when I was there. And yeah, it, I feel like both STAR and S back are kind of really foreign to the kids because they're more for, you know, like the districts and the teachers to see how it's doing. But, and the kids know that it's important, but I don't think we like really took ownership of it because they were like, here, you're going to do this test now. And we're like, oh, fine, we'll do the test. But I think I probably would have put more effort into it if I myself reflected on it and made goals for myself. Cause our teacher would be like, you know, do a good job because like the district is getting judged. And we're like, okay, but it just seems a lot more personal if you like set goals for yourself. So I agree with that.
I was just going to say, one, same exact thing. I love that the kids get to see the test. Cause I don't even know if the kids ever got to see the score of what they got. Like, I don't even know.
And they're old enough to know, right? Like they should be part of that discussion, right? You know? Yeah.
That's good. And the other thing is, is I think it is great. I didn't know if the high school has always allowed hats. But I think the hat thing for those kids, I don't know if it's because as a parent, I didn't, I had kid, my first two are not hat wearers. But like now that I have a hat wearer, I think that allowing them to wear hats and it's, it gives them, I don't know if it's a sense of security or something else that shows their personality. But I think if it's not a distraction, I think it's awesome. I don't, we never were allowed to wear hats at school. So I think it's great.
I remember in middle school, I was thinking that was a strange rule that you're not allowed to wear hats. But like, I'm not a hat wearer, so I didn't really care. I remember like the teacher's been like, take your hat off. And I would always be like, but why? So I'm glad that it's-
Yeah. I mean, I think the main theme of the dress code is being reasonable. Like, I think at the end of the day, that's what it is. So even if a student is coming in and- So even if a student is coming in, is really, that's not appropriate for school, it's a conversation with the guidance counselor who has a conversation at home. These are people that know the student, it's not just some random teacher calling a kid out. And then with the hats, like, we're being reasonable, we need to see your ears, you know, so we can't, and the reason why is they walk around with their earbuds in. So that's a line where we're not accepting that, right? So we'll let you have the hat, but we need to see your ears, right?
Didn't even think of that. But yeah.
As winter comes, no earbuds.
No earbuds. Yeah, those hunter hats are going to come back.
Maybe, but.
Was the high school always hat-friendly?
Very shortly after I started there, it.
I was going to say, as long as I was.
Decided to stop the battle on, it, it comes to, as adults, how do we want to burn our time?
And we want to burn the rest of the school.
Is it important enough to say, take that hat off and start with a confrontation and like that's.
The culture of hats has evolved too.
It's just changed.
Your parents were wearing hats. My dad never wore a hat, but now the kids are home and their dads are wearing hats, or moms. I mean, so it's, it's, kind of keep up with the times.
I don't know if it's still the same at the high school, like, some teachers, it was at teacher discretion once you were in the classroom, or there were certain times where it was like, if you're taking a test, take your hat off. So there was, you know, it just depended on that, but it's, it's been just.
It's been very well received.
And I think it's helped with the community.
If you wake up at seven in the morning in U of B class in 7:10, a hat is an excellent.
Yeah, I started to think about it myself. It's a serious.
I just wanted to thank you both for the, the presentation, you know, and these, these presentations on these buildings, it can very easily be a, hey, look at all the great stuff we're doing, and just kind of leave it at that. But for us, it's much more helpful if you take that next level down and even, you know, very confidently kind of look at some of the opportunities you need. I'm not saying gaps, but just opportunities and what you want to do with like the results of the data, like you guys showed us tonight. So I just greatly appreciate you kind of taking it to that net, that next level and showing us where your focus is and what you think the items are of importance are moving forward.
Thanks. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Next up on the agenda is the quarterly budget report.
Okay, in a very similar way to how Neil said, I bet you wish Jason is here, I bet you wish Amy Merriweather was here right now too, don't you? Instead of me giving you the overview of the quarterly, but you'll find it in a very similar format as it's been in the past, of the first page around revenues, specifically around state grants and federal grant awards, and the delta between last year and this year. Then you will also see the expenditures and where those are happening relative to the budget, what's been expended so far, and the percentage of expenditure in each one of those major accounts, and finally, an enrollment and staffing comparison. So Amy has shared with me, if, after your review, if you have any specific questions, please send them her way, and she would be more than happy to answer them. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Again, second round call for public audience. Anyone have anything to say? Great. Well, our next meeting is December 13th. Boy, hardest believe we're thinking about December already, but it'll be right here in our conference room. And then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Or second. Thank you. Katie, Katie just reminded me, so a message should have went out to parents. However, tomorrow begins the first of three days of elementary parent/teacher conferences. So again, a message went out to parents. If there is a circumstance of inclement weather and we need to delay, then the day tomorrow for elementary only will be a full day of school, and the early release day scheduled for tomorrow will be moved to next Tuesday. And the conferences will be at the same time, same bat time, same bat station as they were scheduled for tomorrow. Again, that's only if we have a delay, and you should have received a message from your principal today with those specifics.
I did.
Thank you.
I know at least one elementary school went out.
I got mine too.
Okay.
Two down. Great.
So Tara had made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
No.
All does in favor? All right, great, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.